Are you ready? Yes, no?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's call our council work session to order. Madam Kirk, would you read the role, please?
Mr. Jacobs? Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lynn? Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Welpert?
Here.
Motion through the agenda is proposed. Second. We have a motion and a second on the agenda. Any questions or discussion? Hearing not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same side, that motion passes. Today, we're here for the review of University Avenue enhancements submitted by Eric Thorson, City Engineer.
Hi, Eric Thorson, City Engineer. Today, the staff wants to talk to council about the enhancements on University. We've been reviewing check plans with the consultant and they're working on final design. And of course, their enhancements are included in that. We all want a really nice corridor. We want to take some time to kind of show you some of the things that we're thinking about. Some of the enhancements take some maintenance, some take more maintenance. And a lot of the maintenance, or higher maintenance items, kind of fall on leisure services. They're spread pretty thin already and have some comments about that. We really need some input from the council as to what you'd like to see out there and what you're willing to afford, or really budget for maintenance for. You know, as you all know, we're working on a very tight budget on this project and we want to make it a really nice project. On the other hand, we also are going to have some maintenance responsibilities that'll go along with that over time. So, I want to turn it over to Larry Wheeley from AECOM. He'll get the presentation started and then I think they have some handouts towards the end and really encourage the council and the new council folks too to give us some input on this. It's pretty important that we figure out what we need to do here and how we can maintain it in the future.
Okay, thanks, Larry.
Right. Thanks, Eric. As Eric said, our goal tonight is really to receive input, both formally tonight as we discuss this and then also we've got a survey that we'd like to hand out at the end to kind of get some stuff in writing from the council as we move forward. We'll be looking at some of those building blocks that we would use for the enhancements. We'd also be looking at the different areas, the commercial and the residential areas. We want to treat those differently, look a little bit at the cost implications for each of those. And JB will be here to talk something about the maintenance costs, which is a pretty significant part of our looking at the design and wanting to do things that are easy to maintain and not a costly, ongoing cost for the city. So, we'll want to review the public input on the project, look at kind of our baseline and enhanced scenarios, the cost, the phasing, how we can phase the project, and then look at selecting those features in the near future. Just want to go back through a little bit of our public input that we've had on the project. We've had two public information meetings. We've been to the council a few times. We've met with Met Transit during October. We met with, had six different meetings with property owners in Phase One of the project, invited each of them to those meetings and had several people turn out for those. We've also met with the Complete Streets Committee a couple of times. And at all of those meetings, one of the things that we heard loud and clear was the importance of aesthetics and enhancements to the project and wanting that to be a part of the future University Avenue project. We've kind of broken down the design into what we're calling building blocks. That'd be enhanced intersection safety, lighting, transit waiting or bus stops, the amenities, beautification, landscaping, and then the gateways. Some of those items have to be built right away or we can't do them. That'd be something like a, maybe an enhanced crosswalk. We can't do that if we delay that. Trees, though, those could be planted later when funding becomes available. So, we've kind of looked at where that is as far as the, how those would fit into our overall project budget. The first block is enhanced intersection safety. This is something where we'd want to look at doing something similar to what was done on US 63 with the corners being enhanced, putting the either colored paving or we've kind of been talking about brick pavers and those are kind of out of favor right now with the additional maintenance. We could also do something with pedestrian refuges for where people have to cross the longer streets. Just looking at things that we can do from a design standpoint that would look good but also improve safety at the intersections. Lighting is an important part of the project. Our baseline design does have roadway lighting, but we'd also want to look at, do we want to do enhancements to that lighting? Currently, we're looking at using lighting very similar to US 63 for the street lighting. But then we also want to look at pedestrian lighting. This is a picture that shows the US 63 pedestrian lighting. That'd be something that would be good to add if we had the funding for that. But it's one of those things that is an add-on to it. And really for the lighting, maintenance is pretty minimal. Probably the biggest cause there would be the occasional light that goes out or we've also, I know, had some of these lights been hit already in US 63 with the, you know, with errant vehicles. Bus stops is an area that we've heard a lot about and want to make sure that we do something with those. The current ones right now would be replaced and we're just, we're looking at what we'd want to do as we replace those. Do we want to just put a simple bench or do we want to go to the next level and just put a shelter there? Or we can also look at additional lighting, a bicycle rack, a shelter that would provide an area to put the route map on. Those different things that would really enhance that area. The maintenance cost on that would be a little higher than the usual because of the increased snow removal and then maintaining those landscaping beds that are used in that area. We kind of lumped a lot of things into this area, which would be the beautification and amenities. These would be things that we could either do on the side of the road or in the median in some locations to really change the appearance of the corridor from a roadway corridor to more, I call it a boulevard or something that's got more enhancements as you go down the road. And this is where we start getting into the kind of things that leisure services would really get more involved in maintaining as we have those planting beds that need to be maintained and also the, whether it's additional grass that needs to be mowed or even the prairie plantings need that maintenance. Maybe not as often as a turf grass, but still require some maintenance. We'd also be looking at the possibility of some colored paving in the median that could be done to change the appearance of the corridor, some benches along the recreational trail, just some different things that could be added to improve that look of the corridor. We also think that there's some opportunities for gateways, the larger intersections, and that'd probably be more, hopefully that'll come back up for you, but we'd be most looking at things like the intersection of Green Hill Road, that interchange. There's lots of green space there that could be used for enhancements. The US 63 intersection has a lot of green space. And then there's other places, in particular, maybe the area between the frontage roads and university that have that opportunity for some additional signing and enhancements to that area. All right. So, just briefly, this is what we would consider the commercial district along University. That goes from Midway Drive to Ainsborough Avenue. And this is just a picture we took there at the intersection from Google Street View, the Falls Avenue intersection. And then what we're saying is this, this is what we'd call the ultimate streetscape and this isn't necessarily what we would recommend as the, what we'd want that to look like. Eventually, it's kind of putting all the different elements in one picture. Apologize for that continuing to blink on you. But we would call that the ultimate. It's got kind of everything that we have in our cost estimate put into one picture. So, it shows the types of things that we'd want with the colored crosswalks, some plantings in the median. It shows the bus stop on the other side of the intersection. Might be good, too.
Yeah.
Larry, do you have any handouts?
Yeah, we do. JB's going to hand those out.
Larry, can we get sent this PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay.
Looks like this slide is about halfway in. It's labeled as page 14 in the lower right-hand corner. So, again, we're not necessarily recommending that we would put each and every one of those items into this intersection. It's more just a representation of what could go in throughout the corridor. I'm not necessarily looking at each of those going into that particular location. If you flip the page to the next page where it talks about existing streetscape and ultimate streetscape, this would be in the more residential area. This happens to be the intersection of Walgate, which is currently a signalized cross intersection, but because the school is no longer there, we'd be looking at removing those signals. But this would be a place where we would still have a pedestrian crossing with colored crosswalk. You can see there, we have the simple bus stop. This is not a main stop for Met Transit, but we would be able to have the simple bus stop. And again, not necessarily recommending that we do all these things at this location, but just a representation of what could go on throughout the corridor. So, the cost summary. Right now, our preliminary cost estimate for all the enhancements we've shown you, kind of if you did the ultimate streetscape, that'd be everything that we've shown. Phase One, which is the first project we'll be constructing, which is between Green Hill and Ainsborough. We're at about $1.4 million. Phase Two is $844,000. Phase Three is just short of a million dollars. So, we've got a total, if we did everything, for $3.2 million. The funding opportunity that we've been looking at is the Black Hawk County Gaming Grant, which we're looking at applying for $750,000, which would be matched by the city for $750,000. And that's the budget number that we've been given to work with is that million and a half. And so, really what we're kind of looking for is if we were to pare down what we have in the project to fit within that million and a half, what are the priorities of the council so as we do the design, we can put in those features that we're looking for as priorities of the council? And for the gaming grant, I know we've got it on schedule to come back to the council in December for approval of the application and then that's due at Black Hawk County Gaming on December 15th. So, this is kind of in preparation for that to make sure that we have the plans in process as we move forward to that gaming grant application. So, the last slide here, as we said at the beginning, is, well, before we go to that, I'm going to let JB, if you want to talk a little bit about maintenance and the things that we've talked about and how the maintenance comes into play.
Thank you, Larry. One of the sheets that I passed out is a little bit of a report on what we're doing for Highway 63 North. You're probably all familiar with the improvements there and they look really nice, but we did incur some additional maintenance in there. That report is based on an annual year of maintenance. You can see additional snow removal. We've got sidewalks and kind of a curved trail that run through 63 North. I think we base that on 10 snows. So, if you have 10 snows, some years less, some years more, but about $3,800 bucks there. And snow removal, mowing is contractual on Highway 63 North, so that's an exact number of $5,506.38. We added decorative litter receptacles all the way through that corridor that were not there before, so you can see our cost there, about $1,891. The brick pavers at the crosswalks were added and in the median some. The expense there is spraying the weeds that grow up out of those brick pavers, just under $300 on those. Additional turf as houses were removed to expand the right-of-way in 63 North corridor, about $450 in spraying that additional turf to control for broadleaf weeds. The tree watering, as noted there, 10x approximately, $3,280. Routine tree maintenance, $616. And I'll note that those are all very small trees at this point. So, years down the road, when those become big trees, that number will go up. And then litter in the non-mowing season, litter pickup by our in-house employees, $924.72 approximately. So, for Highway 63 North, that's one mile and we've got a total cost there of $16,789. And you may say, well, what were you incurring for maintenance there before? The answer would be very minimal. There was housing on one side right up to the road, so that right-of-way just didn't exist. There wasn't the trails or the benches or the litter to pick up out of those garbage receptacles. So, $16,789.7 for one mile. If we added a similar number of amenities for University Avenue, that's three miles. So, you're looking at around $50,000. And the more items that would be selected off of kind of the buffet choices, you know, you could see 60, 70, even $100,000 worth of maintenance annually if you kind of pick the ultimate of all of the different options. Any questions for me on maintenance side of things?
How did you, I got a question. I'm sorry.
Eric, go ahead.
How'd you calculate numbers? Were they based on man-hours, guestimates of man-hours?
Some of it would be guestimates of man-hours, like the mowing was the actual, the price per acre times the, like 8.1 acres for that. I could certainly provide you a more detailed breakdown of my math, but some of it is estimates where it's in-house staff time and we don't record every minute where somebody's at something. And some of it is actual contracted costs. Yep.
Right. And I think one of the things that, we've been talking with JB and Paul about this is that when we pick plants, we want to make sure that we pick those ones that are well-suited for the roadway environment, salt tolerant, drought tolerant, so that they don't require a lot of maintenance beyond the things that we can't avoid. So, as I said, we want to receive your direction regarding these enhancements. And this handout that JB handed out to you on the first page is kind of just a questionnaire or a survey with several of these different items that we're hoping to get some direction from the council on, just by indicating your level of interest in those, just with circle 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And then what we've done is we've included the PowerPoint slides in here because that gives you the background information so you can remember what that is. There's also the detailed cost estimates. The last three pages have kind of the breakdowns. I know in the PowerPoint here, I've got them broken down by phases, which is pretty broad-based, tough to know what you really got. But we've got those broken down so you can say, well, if I cut out the, you know, the median trees, what do I save? And it helps you see where those costs would come from and whether it's worth it to you or not. So, we're asking that these be returned by next Wednesday, November 29th. And our goal is to take that information and come back to you either at the following council meeting or one of the ones in December with kind of what we've heard and kind of narrow down the choices of where we're looking at for the final design of Phase One enhancements. And I think, Eric, can we just have them drop those off at the engineer's office with, when they're done with those? And we can also, Pat, get you electronic versions of this as well. So, with that, if there's any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer it.
Larry, I have a comment. Pavers at intersections are really very attractive. When we put them in around the expert grounds, it was really quite neat-looking. But over time, it's all been turning into the same color. I was driving around there Friday night in the rain and it's just one solid color all the way across. You couldn't even see the yellow line anymore. So, I don't know how you'd address that.
Yeah, I think the pavers are definitely something that's maybe out of favor right now as far as, because of the maintenance and in some cases because the colors are failing. And I think with anything, the pavers, it's tough to maintain those. You can't repaint them or restain them with the stamped stained concrete. When the time comes, it is possible to reapply the stain to that. I know that when we did the Lower Plaza, for instance, that was, it was integral colored, but then it was, a stained color was added to that to really enhance the color. And that's something that can be done every two, three, five years, however often it takes to maintain that.
Another maintenance cost.
Exactly.
Yeah. Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Powers?
You guys look at grant opportunities? Are we researching potential grants like Mid-America, DNR, those kinds of things for some of this beautification stuff in terms of plantings? But I don't know how the leisure services, do you guys get grants for growing stuff and those opportunities?
What we're finding out is that granting on the maintenance side is not very popular. You can usually find grant opportunities for the initial installation, but not too many people want to pay for the, just the routine maintenance or be like a line item in a budget. One other item I should have mentioned to you, currently, we're spending $8,658 for contract mowing, litter collection, and spring trimming for University Avenue. So, we do have that money in our current budget.
One of the things we have looked at and are still investigating is with stormwater protection, there are opportunities for grants with that. There's also some talk of using what's called a pollinator program where there may be some roadside vegetation management funds that would be available for that. And that, we continue to look into those things and see if they might apply. We did have an interesting discussion with the City of Cedar Rapids that has quite a large program of wildflowers and, I guess, plantings. And I think there was 30,000 man-hours of volunteer hours they had annually to help them maintain that, which I was astounded at how many, how much volunteer help they had with that. And I think as we develop some of these areas, it may be something that we continue to look at and see if there's ways to help JB out with that type of effort.
So, on our stuff...
I'm sorry.
On our stuff, are you, you were asking us to just kind of document kind of an idea of a vision we want based on this information? And is it kind of a real beautification piece or what's really needed to make it at least look presentable going forward? And then work with our leisure services to make things really pretty down the road?
I think what we're hoping is that we'll know where your priorities are. And if you end up with fives on all of them and in the other category you add three additional things, we'll know that the council is all for making it that beautiful corridor. If we've got twos and threes and, you know, there's a five on certain items, then we'll know where to put our priorities in the plans.
I think a lot of it, we're in competition with Cedar Falls. We've got to make it look good all the way.
Yeah. Just one thing I always forgot to mention earlier, as far as the border with Cedar Falls, the most difficult part of this project to aesthetically enhance is from Midway Drive to Green Hill Road. The businesses are very close to the, what will be the future sidewalk, the future rec trail. There's very limited green space there. So, that's going to be a challenge for us when we get to Phase Two of the project to make sure that we do have some enhancements in that corridor where there's not a lot of room for it.
Plus, we don't want to block signage for businesses.
Mr. Schmidt?
So, going back to Waterloo and Cedar Falls, if we said we wanted all this, how's that going to compare to Cedar Falls with everything they're doing?
I would say at least as good, probably better if we did all of those items, but that's...
So, is the only thing that we would be, and I'm not saying I'm in favor of that, but, so, would you be saying the only thing difference between Waterloo and Cedar Falls then would be the roundabouts? Did they do pretty much all the rest of the stuff in addition to the roundabouts? I guess I thought they had a whole lot more stuff there for trails and bikes and pedestrians and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so they've done a number of the things, like the tree plantings. They've done some of the enhanced signage at the roundabout and the decorative bus shelters and things like that, but they did not do everything on that list. For example, they didn't do the banners on the light poles. So, there are things that that corridor does not have that we are showing here. So, if we did do the proposed plan, that would exceed what Cedar Falls has done. So, for their corridor, their budget, I think that, the budget we've proposed, which is that $1.5 million for the Black Hawk Gaming Grant, is about what they've done for their enhancements also. But that's on a ratio for the corridor's mileage. So, they didn't spend 1.5 because they have a shorter section, but if you try to prorate it for the length, I think that 1.5 would be a pretty comparable amount of enhancement. Yeah.
So, I thought I remembered reading that they had gone over their budget like 8 million? Would that, is that the wrong number or would that be maybe more based on the roundabouts? So, I'm pretty sure I read that in a courier, so it has to be factual.
They're definitely over what their original estimate was, but I, you know, I don't think we could point to, well, it was the roundabout, it was the storm sewer, it was the landscaping, it was probably a lot of different things that got them.
So, would you go back to what you were just talking to Councilman Powers about briefly, about the only limited space on the, for the green space? Where exactly are you talking about?
Well, right at...
You said Phase Two.
Yeah, starting at Midway Drive as you're coming east. You've got the Casey's Pub, the old Slumberland Building, many of those buildings, especially there, and then I think it, I think it used to be the TV store. But several of those businesses, the Godfathers, the Priority One Auto, they're very close to the right-of-way as it is. In fact, right now, their parking lot is on city right-of-way. So, as we go through there, we're trying not to buy right-of-way from them, but we're, our rec trail and our sidewalk are going to be right at the existing right-of-way line. So, it doesn't give us the green space because behind the rec trail, it's their parking lot. And then we've got a pretty narrow strip of grass between the trail and sidewalk and the back of curb. That's also the area where we've talked about doing the five-lane section, which reduces the amount of stuff that we can put in the median. So, that's where it becomes a challenge to find a space to put any of these enhancements in there. Now, the rec trail itself is an enhancement, the new paving, you know, there's enhancements out there, but it's more just a limited space to do. We certainly don't have room for trees and we don't have room for a big flower bed out there because of the limited right-of-way.
Anybody else? Mr. Morrissey?
Yeah, okay, several things, Larry. First of all, all of these assume that the speed limit's going to be 35 miles an hour from Midway to Green Hill. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then from Greenwell, Green Hill to Highway 63, we have NIDA going on where anybody can go as fast as they want, correct? I mean, I'm being very facetious, but my statement is I don't understand why we did not, and I am going to ask for again, that a study be done for that entire corridor being done at 35 miles an hour and the effect that that would have on the idea of roundabouts going in at some of these intersections where they would fit, namely at Fletcher Avenue and at Green Hill Road. Because I do believe that if there were a lowering of the speed limit to that entire corridor being at 35 miles an hour, some of these things would change, especially if it included cost-effective measures that would indicate that roundabouts were more suitable at those intersections than a fully signalized one, which in the long term are going to cost the City of Waterloo more than what roundabouts and the maintenance of roundabouts would cost at the intersections where they might work. And I know that's a long diatribe, but I've been saying that for how many months now, Larry? And I don't see any additional figures other than us taking that this... us taking that this final design is going to be eight fully signalized intersections. And with eight fully signalized intersections, these things, these enhancements would be great. But if we pulled out, pulled back and included some roundabouts in a 35 mile an hour speed limit, as, and just as an example, when you have here pedestrian refuge islands, okay, and as an example, that, that one picture that you have of, of Walgate, there, that's where that speed limit is at 45 miles an hour. And pedestrians crossing there, and it's sort of an assumption that if people are going to go 45, they're going to go 50, maybe even 55. And how are we being safe to the public and the pedestrians if we're going to have this be a pedestrian-friendly, bicycle-friendly, bikeway, and you even described it as a boulevard with enhancements, but yet have people going 50 to 55 miles an hour? I don't get it. I, I still don't get it. I don't, not a question, comment?
Are you finished?
Yeah, I guess so.
Anyone else have any questions? We still have about 12 minutes left.
So, one other question I guess I would have is going back to this limited space there on Phase Two. You know, I've had it pointed out to me that out on Shawless, I think it's east of 21, between 21 and the casino, that the trail there is very close to the road. So, number one, and I don't drive that part of Shawless all that much, but number one, if you were on a bicycle and tipped over the wrong way, you could actually be in the road or pretty close to it. Number two, I'm wondering what kind of experience you had out there during the winter with snow removal, because it would kind of seem like it's just like Franklin Street where the post office, and I know we don't have mail deliveries out on Shawless, but they won't deliver the mail because when we plow the street, it plows up over the sidewalk and the sidewalk doesn't ever get cleared. Do, do you know what the, JB, I don't know if that'd be for you, whoever was responsible for clearing that trail last winter, how that worked?
Most of that, or a good chunk of it, is along Agfield. So, we didn't clear it at all. We considered it a recreational trail. And so, you're right, it would be a nightmare with heavy, heavy drifting to, to clear it. So, no, we did not.
I mean, are we going to be, or we'll be, be getting into something similar?
I think in University Avenue, we'll be clearing everything. It's pretty much all going to function as pedestrian sidewalks. So, yeah, we're going to have some challenges normal-wise for sure. I, I think we can do it. It's just how much equipment and resources do you have to put towards it?
Anyone else?
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Yeah. The other thing was, I, I don't know if it's last meeting, or maybe one of the public information meetings, maybe it's both, that the cost, what the state gave for the transfer was 28 million, but then the cost had risen to 38 million. Is that correct, what I heard before?
The, the cost is 38 million. That's what it was originally. But this, this state only gave so much for it. So, that wasn't, the cost wasn't originally 28, and now it's ballooned to 38. We actually were at, before we came up with some cost savings, we were at 42. And we've looked at what we can do to reduce that cost to get it down to the 38.
Okay. And the 38 does not include any of these?
The 38 includes the million and a half for enhancements.
It does?
Yes.
But we, we're aware that there are some opportunities to get some money elsewhere, aren't we?
Right. The Black Hawk County Gaming is probably the biggest opportunity that's out there to get three-quarters of a million, on which would take that $38 million cost down to, you know, 37, too.
Can, can any local option money be used?
I, that's not, I'm not, not sure how that would go.
Eric?
That's a possibility. Obviously, we have five and six-year plans for that money already. So, those plans would have to be adjusted if that were to be used there. So, something we'd have to look at in the future. At this point, with the $28 million, and we haven't even bid anything yet, so we don't exactly know exactly where we are. We know that we're very tight with the 28 million. And I think everybody kind of realized upfront that we'd probably have to be looking at other funding sources down the road. And so, we'll have to do that eventually.
And Eric, while you're up there, am I correct that the local option tax cannot be used for sidewalks, trails, enhancements? Isn't it just for roads, or am I mistaken?
No, you're correct.
Thanks.
But at the same time, Eric, would not it be possible to, to take some of the money that's already in there and use some of that 28 million for the enhancements, and then use a local option money for the road? I mean, that, that kind of adjustment is an option, even though it may not be one that flies, but it is an option, isn't it?
I think there's various combinations you can look at, and we'll have to do that at some point.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Powers?
With that being mentioned, we could look at 1,000 feet east of Amesboro, just throwing that number out there, and do road use money on, or option tax money on going to Highway 63. Would that be a possibility with asphalt only, not complete reconstruction?
Well, that may be a possibility, and we kind of mentioned that.
It helps reduce the cost and the dollar values coming from somewhere else.
In some of the original council work sessions, when we were talking with the higher number and the 28 million, we talked about some things from Amesboro to 63 might have to be of a lesser extent, or some different type of construction or something. So, but we're concentrating on the part from Midway to Amesboro first, where the highest traffic is and the businesses and everything.
And then, one more, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Plenty of time.
One more question, on the gaming, for you, on the gaming dollars, and I don't know who can answer that, but it's 750, the max you can ask from the gaming. So, if they were willing to go to a million, we could look at using some other dollars to get us to a $2 million, right? I mean, there's options. That's, my only question is, there's options out there.
Yeah. I think that's definitely an option. I think we, we wanted to, the 750 was based on the experience that Cedar Falls had with a similar project, thinking that the gaming board would go with a similar type of funding.
Oh, I thought they got more. They didn't get more than 750?
I believe it was 600.
Oh, okay. My mistake.
Anyone else? We still have seven minutes. Is there anything else that you want to share with us?
That's it?
I see all three new council members are here. Do they have an opportunity to vote in this as well?
Sure.
Very good.
And Larry, you'll, you'll get us the, Larry, you'll get us the electronic version of this?
Yes.
And are you having any more public meetings, or are you meetinged out with those?
I would, I wouldn't say we're meetinged out. I think the next meeting we've got scheduled would be the public hearing for the final plans for Midway to, or, excuse me, from Green Hill to Amesboro.
And so, you've been giving out these questionnaires at the meetings you've had?
Actually, those are new as of today.
Oh, okay.
For this meeting.
Okay. So, the public meetings have been had so far. You haven't gotten any, other than verbal?
We haven't done anything official like this. We've, we've gotten, I'll say, very limited written responses at those meetings. But as I said, that's one thing that people brought up. That's probably the most consistent thing that was brought up, is wanting to make sure that we didn't just build a ugly road.
Yeah. And I've heard that same comment. Yep.
Anything else? Well, thank you, Larry. We should appreciate it. And we'll get these back to you before next Wednesday, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We've got about seven minutes here. Repeat the question, Noel.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. The question was, have we looked at enhancement funds, which is federal funds that are set aside for enhancement such as that? And we'll, we'll look at that as part of the MPO process. For the most part, the MPO is generally planned out five years. So, if you're going to look at that immediately, we'd have to try to switch a different project or something like that. But we will, we will look at that.
Cedar Falls does not access those funds, right to their portion?
I don't, I look at it, Eric. No, they did not.
I think the other thing with federal funds is, there's a lot of strings attached to that, that might bring those same strings to all of the projects, which would probably make it a loser of money for us. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Larry, thank you for your presentation today. And we'll get these back to you as soon as possible. Counsel, I'd like to just take a five-minute recess. We have at least five minutes before we can start the next meeting. So. Pardon me? Yes, but we can't start till 5:45, 4:45. We have a, I'm just asking for a five-minute recess.
Sure.
We need a motion and a second. Okay, we have motion and a second for recess. I'll say aye.
Aye.
Can please sit down. We're going to resume our work session. We need a motion to resume the work session.
Motion to reconvene?
Second. Yeah, motion and a second on reconvening. Any questions? If you're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Our second part of our work session today is continued discussion of an ordinance allowing fireworks usage July 3rd, 4th, and December 31st from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM each year. So, the mayor's not here. Who's, who's in charge of this discussion?
Mr. Schmidt, or Councilman Schmidt is the chair for the public safety. Well, yeah. Do we, I guess my question would be, since the last time we talked about this, has there been any further conversation with Cedar Falls and Evansdale? Does anybody know?
I think Mr. Morrissey has, but Mr. Zeller for possibly?
Well, go ahead, Pat, if you're.
No, I defer to the city attorney for sure.
Oh, okay. Well, sorry about that. Dave Zeller for city attorney. It appears that Cedar Falls is going to be on tonight. They're going to have their second reading for a total ban, both New Year's and 4th of July. I, I am aware that there's been a petition presented to the city with about 400 signatures in Cedar Falls. Had a conversation with their city attorney this afternoon. I don't know if that's going to sway their voting or not. But they were four to three first time, and they have the same political hot potato that we do. And Evansdale, I think, is going to follow whatever Waterloo and Cedar Falls do. Everybody sort of has the wait-and-see-what-everybody-else-do's attitude. I was lucky enough to be at the city attorney conference, the state conference in Des Moines on Friday. And we're not the only municipality facing this. I do believe that Des Moines is probably going to have a ban, and maybe Pat Trelor knows more than I do, having spoken with fire marshals and things and fire chiefs. But it looks like Iowa City's going to ban, and Ames is going to ban, Cedar Rapids is banning. Very few municipalities are going with anything of any length at all. I think it's either Sioux City or Council Bluffs. I'm not sure which one is going to go with a couple of weeks around the 4th of July time. But it appears everybody had the same problems we did in July with a hail of irritated citizens. And I think for those of you who need to be reminded of that, you can look at the tapes of what went on back in July. But it wasn't pretty. And we weren't expecting it. We were sort of taken aback by the public outcry with that. But I do think the public was sincere. But now, if you look at Cedar Falls, you've got a petition with 400 signatures requesting additional time and better fireworks shooting. So, one thing I did want to point out, too, on tonight's agenda, we did say midnight. And that would be allowed, we can go till 12:30 on the New Year's Eve gig. But as far as the 4th of July goes, state code restricts us to 11:00 PM. And we cannot go, we can't be easier than what the state allows. We can be, we can be more stringent. But whatever limitations the state sets, we cannot be easier. Keep that in mind as you're deliberating then. If there's no more questions. I did talk to the mayor this afternoon. We need to get moving on this. We have New Year's Eve coming up. We need to make a decision. And what we, I think what he would like as a result of today's session would be this council putting something together that we can put on the agenda for next Monday and get the ball rolling. And I think if that doesn't happen, what he's going to do is just propose a ban, and we'll vote on that on Monday and see what happens. And also, we're keeping an eye on other cities. There you go. Thank you.
Gentlemen, I haven't changed my views. I'm still in favor of a ban on Class 1 fireworks. That's where I stand on it.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry. Let me, let me move on to say what Cedar Falls is doing. You know that consumer fireworks are divided up into two categories. You have Class 1 and Class 2. Class 2 is a little bit confusing because they talk about sparklers in there, but they're not the kind of sparklers that you can buy at Hy-Vee and stand in the backyard and light and wave, okay? They're the more sophisticated type. So, Cedar Falls is actually banning all Class 1 and Class 2 consumer fireworks. What they're not banning is the novelties, the snakes, the sparklers and things like that. So, when you do see ban of consumer fireworks in our ordinance, we're not talking about novelties, but we are talking about Class 1 and Class 2. All right?
I, I've read through it. I did not see anything about novelty fireworks.
It's in the state code.
It's in the code for.
It's in the state code, not in ours. And the, the big thing about all this, not to sit here and then take up all the time, but you know, the, there was a federal case that came out of Des Moines in, as a result of some, four, four cities last June, Johnston, I think, Urbandale, Des Moines, something. I can't remember the four of them. But there was a preliminary injunction that the Bellino Fireworks Company out of Nebraska filed. And there was a temporary order. And so, we're operating that this federal case now is the law now until there's an actual trial. Trial in that matter is not set for federal court in the Southern District of Iowa until April 18th of 2018. So, we have preliminary rulings right now, but things may change between now and April 18th. What we can do right now, what we're allowed to do is to, to mess around with the zoning aspect of this. We could limit the sale of fireworks to like industrial or M-1 type of areas if we, if we so choose. But to do things like permits, or peddler's permits, or transient merchant permits, anything like that, we're not allowed to do at all. The cities are not going to make a nickel off this, bottom line. All right? Sorry, now I'll shut up. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Over the weekend, I had contact with Dick DeWalter, who's on the city council in Evansdale, and with Frank Derr and Nick Tiber, or Tyber, who are on city council in Cedar Falls, and discussed with them where they were at with this first and second class. And my understanding from talking with him, but not only my conversation with, talking with the League of Cities today, was what was, is that the second-class consumer, second-class consumer fireworks basically go back to pre-Senate File 489, and included in them are some of these novelty fireworks. But if you look at the, the definition of second-class consumer fireworks, they're cone fountains, cylindrical fountains, flitter sparklers, ground and handheld sparkling devices, ground spinners, illuminating torches, toy smoke devices, wheels and wire-dipped sparklers. And those are the things that are described as second-class consumer fireworks. And in, in talking with the League of Cities, they did not know if the towns that had banned, had banned all, or had divided these up into first and second-class consumer fireworks. But I think that is an important thing, that we do not want to ban fireworks that aren't the subject of the problem that we have here with, with people exploding these things and causing public safety issues, or just nuisance issues as seen by the people who are totally for a, a all-out ban. And so, taking that in consideration, what I did was I, I put together, because in our, one of our attachments, we had a ordinance that had been prepared by, I don't know if it was the mayor and, and the city clerk in conjunction with the city attorney. But I added some things, and I gave a copy of that to everybody on council, and said, under prohibitions, it shall be unlawful for any person to use or explode any first-class consumer firework within the corporate city limits of the city of Waterloo, except on July 4th of each year during the hours of 5:00 to 11:00 PM. And secondly, the second-class consumer fireworks are designated by law, and are those in existence pre-Senate File 49, such are allowed as pre-Senate File 489. Now, if there's others, if there's parts in there that weren't allowed pre-Senate File 489, then those should be excluded. And then F, the sale of consumer fireworks, first-class, within the corporate limits of the city of Waterloo, shall be allowed only within areas zoned as industrial. And G, any seller of consumer fireworks shall prominently display s- And G, any seller of consumer fireworks shall prominently display signs informing the public that first-class consumer fireworks may only be legally used within the corporate city limits of the city Waterloo on July 4th and 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. And H, users of first-class fireworks must be 18, may not be used within 200 yards of hospital, church, school, health clinic, public and senior facility properties, may not direct any first-class firework at any angle or direction other than user's private property, and must pick up all debris. And then the final thing was that the city of Waterloo shall submit a monetary compensation bill to the Iowa Department of Revenue slash Management for all hours employed and all resources necessary for the enforcement of the unfunded mandate resulting from Senate File 489. So I'd just like to submit that to the council, as well as to the mayor and the city attorney, as something that I would like to see added to the ordinance that was proposed.
Comments?
Yeah, Councilman Morrissey, looking over this and everything, I did ask you the question as far as the item I in there, and our legal ability to be able to build a state for actual monetary or funds because the police would have to enforce on those things. I mean, I don't know, maybe the city attorney would be able to answer that. Is that something that we could legally do, submit a bill to the state?
I haven't seen Mr. Morrissey's pronouncements here yet. That's a very interesting question. I doubt it, but I could look into it. But if it was possible, I would love to, I imagine many municipalities would be doing that for many reasons.
Well, yes, that's, I mean, we could submit the bill, have it in the ordinance, but that doesn't mean the state's going to honor it.
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
So, Mr. Zeller, unfortunately, I had it with me last week. I didn't bring it again this week, but my understanding, I got from the mayor of Evansdale, their ordinance, and they are going to allow fireworks, at least was what I saw on paper, New Year's Eve, and then, I believe, three days at the 4th of July. So unless something's changed, they're not doing it.
No, I haven't seen anything. This is just what I gleaned from other attorneys.
Okay.
So if you know more than I do, then I'll defer to your wisdom.
Well, that was just what he said at that time, and I believe Cedar Falls is doing a complete ban. I'm a little frustrated by this because, you know, this, we had this lengthy conversation last spring, early summer, when this came about, and I talked at that time about how I think Waterloo, Cedar Falls, and Evansdale needs to get together and all get on the same page, whatever that page is. And I don't have any strong feelings on the actual firework release per se. I know there are some folks that think it's a great display of patriotism, and I respect that, and I certainly know there are other people that are affected by this, either because of their experiences in the military, or because of animals and that kind of stuff. So I have empathy on both sides. But I think the biggest frustration is for our police department, trying to figure out how to manage this, and especially when we've got towns on both sides of us, and we're all operating on different timeframes. I had hoped the three mayors would get together and come to some kind of a recommendation. Apparently, that's not happening. So what I would really like to see happen is I'd like to see this council vote to allow fireworks, New Year's Eve, for six hours, eight hours, I don't care, and then not do anything regarding the 4th of July until the new council is seated. Have a similar situation in Cedar Falls. I'm not sure about Evansdale, but in Cedar Falls, that vote's four to three. I think a couple, two or three of those council members may be leaving. We know three of ours are. And I'd really like to see the new council members come in and have an ability to make a decision on this, because they're the ones who are going to have to deal with it. And in the meantime, I don't know who's going to be on Public Safety Committee after the first year, because I'm assuming some of those will be reassigned, but in lieu of the mayors apparently not being able to get together and come up with some leadership ideas, I'd like to see the city council, from each one of the communities, appoint two members from their Public Safety Committee, let those six individuals get together and figure this out between now and the 4th of July, and be done with it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Morrissey?
Councilman Schmidt, the Evansdale one was voted on months ago, and from my conversation with Mayor Foss, when I went and picked up a copy, which, by the way, we have a copy of the fireworks ordinance for Evansdale, and that was given to Kelly Felkley a couple of months ago. And that has not, and it's not going to change according to Mayor Foss and according to Councilman DeWalter, that they have made their decision, and that's what it's going to be. And as far as Cedar Falls, I didn't sense that there was an interest right now in sitting down and talk with us. I got the feeling that each community is going to decide for themselves what they want, and it appears that that's what we're doing. I would be against any fireworks usage on New Year's Eve. And one of the compelling reasons for me is because when I had my ward meeting, no one wanted fireworks on New Year's Eve. They want an outright ban on New Year's Eve. They don't see where it'd be appropriate at that point in time, or over those holidays, so I'd be against that.
So you don't see a benefit to having the three communities all be in agreement on how this is managed? Is that what you said?
No, what it appears to me is that Evansdale's already made their decision, and they're set with that, from the conversations I had with them, and then the people from Evansdale, and then Cedar Falls is doing theirs as we speak right now, and they're going ahead with that without, you know, any deference to us at all. And I think that if we want to hold off on July 4th and the new council coming on, that's what we're going to do, but in the meantime, I think we need to just pass a, I don't know if it's a resolution or what, that would carry the best force of banning all fireworks during the holiday season this year, through July, through January 3rd, when the sales end.
Mr. Morrissey, when the state allowed the use of fireworks, presented it to us, it was a wait-and-see situation. We had no idea how the citizens were going to react. We found out that when the sale of fireworks went on June 1st, they started firing them on June 1st. Last night at 5:00, I heard fireworks. So they're still firing them off even though they're illegal. So I appreciate the work that you've done on this, but the numbers that I'm hearing that people are spending on fireworks, $500, $800 and more, and you think they're going to hold it off until 5:00 on the 4th to fire them, it's not going to happen. They're going to be firing them right along. So I would, I prefer to eliminate the use of fireworks altogether, which I would believe would eliminate the salesmen from setting up tents all over Waterloo, because knowing if they can't fire them off here, they aren't going to come here to sell them either. I think we need to join the other major cities and just ban fireworks altogether. But that's my opinion. Okay?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor Protem, I have to respectfully disagree, because I know for a fact that fireworks, like you say, are going to be shot off. My biggest concern is, is if we do a total ban, you're still going to have people doing it, you're going to have people being fined and everything else. But I went out and I actually, I didn't have a lot of people calling or emailing me, so what I did was, is I did polls. I just started asking folks. And what ended up happening was, is it was about 50/50. I even had veterans who said that they did not want to see fireworks banned. So, as I have stated before, for me, yes, let's back the window down, but to ban them totally, I don't think is the direction that we should be going. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree, I would agree with what Mr. Councilman Amos just said. I mean, professionally, opinion from the police, I guess, if we ban this, is that going to eliminate your workload, or at least dispatching to firework problems, because they can still buy them in Iowa, and they can buy them in South Dakota, and they can buy them in Michigan, and so it's not really going to hamper the workload, right? Well, it's up to you, but...
Joe Leibel, Police Captain. We had fireworks calls prior to fireworks being legal, so if it's going to eliminate it, no, but they were substantially less before they were legal in Iowa. Once they're legally be sold, they're going to be fired.
If I could continue for a second to add to that, not, I'm done with that question, but along again with what Councilman Amos said, I too have talked to, because we all got this huge impact in July, whatever, July 15th, or whenever it really hit us. It was huge. But in since then, and having conversations with people, and especially what I'm finding in my documentation, is that Vietnam vets like it, because they like to have that opportunity to do fireworks with their families. It's kind of a, I don't think it's some liberty thing or anything like that, but it's an opportunity to have an evening with their families, shooting off and showing safety, because we're not going to get rid of fireworks. They're going to be here. We're going to get impacted by it. I mean, I think we could limit the time to shoot them, but I don't believe that's going to change as long as the Iowa Legislature is going to continue with what they have. And in the fiscal note, when they did this piece of legislation, the fiscal note shows a huge amount of dollars that's coming into the state with no reimbursements to the cities other than local fire department protection, emergency medical services providers. There is a grant program to establish and provide fireworks safety education programming. I'm not sure that the fire marshal, state fire marshal is willing to release any money yet, or even has the ability to release any money, but I think that's an avenue that we should look at with Mr. Schmidt's, Councilman Schmidt's idea of doing New Year's Eve, and I will tell you, too, along those lines, nobody that I talked to wanted these during the holy period, and that would be the first, the eve of New Year's Eve, that they would like to have that, because who knows what the temperature's going to be outside? It could be, nobody's going to have the courage to go outside and try to light off a firecracker that's going to get blown out several times.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we have to close. We're moving into the next...
So I guess my position would be that I kind of like what Councilman Schmidt talked about, is giving the authority beyond this council, looking at it, but to come up with some decision in the next week to, or couple weeks anyway, to allowing anything other than during that holy period while the Legislature, in their infinite wisdom, said we could do it.
Okay. We have to move along, Dave.
I know, I know we have to close, but I did talk to the mayor. First, you all have to remember that he and Mayor Foss and Mayor Brown have spent a lot of time talking about these issues, but it's impossible with councils and the public to come up to a consensus. As you can see, we can't even do it in our own. It's going to be, what's probably going to happen then on next Monday, the mayor told me to remind everybody here, is that there's going to be something on the agenda for a total ban, and we can take it from there. So if you can all live with that, it'll continue the discussion, or maybe, because, you know, let's face it, we got Thanksgiving coming up. There's not a lot to be done.
Sure.
So you can probably count on that being on the agenda for Monday, and then we'll take it from there.
Okay, I need a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Let's call our Human Resources Committee to order. Madam Kirk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
I believe Mr. Jacobs.
Sorry, Mr. Jacobs?
Need a motion for the agenda?
Motion for the agenda is proposed.
Second.
Motion to second on the agenda. Any questions or discussion? If you're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm saying that we have two requests today. Let's take them one at a time.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Or Chairman, make a motion to approve the request from Fire Chief for authorization to appoint three fire recruits from the civil service list.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the three requests. Is there any discussion on that? Can we have an overview on that, Mr. Chairman?
Pat Treelar, Fire Chief. Our authorized number is 109.5 full-time equivalents. In early July, we had two retirements. In August, we had one death. We had another retirement in September, and then sadly, we had another death in October. So that leaves us five authorized personnel down right now. In August, we had a little bit of the injury bug hit us in August. In addition to those positions that were short, we had three on long-term injury, and I define long-term injury as four weeks or longer. We also had a military deployment. That was a two-month deployment. And sadly, going forward right now, we have five long-term injuries, and we'll have seven by the first week of December. So with all that said, we're short. We're five authorized positions that we currently have open. Obviously, the request in front of you right now is to fill three positions.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, okay, so 109 and 1/2, and right now, we're at 104 and 1/2?
Correct.
Okay, and then you said something about there's seven more?
Well, we've got long-term injuries. I'm not trying to confuse the issue. We have five positions that were open. No, I'm not trying to confuse it, Michelle. What I'm trying to do is to say how short we are, and so we're five authorized positions short. In addition to that, we also have a long-term injuries that we're facing in the shortage, and that'll make us seven short on top of the five in early December. But before you, right now, we are five short authorized numbers.
Okay, so if, and they're budgeted for in our current budget year?
Correct.
So the money has been authorized to be there?
Yes.
Okay, and that's all, five of those positions, we're at 104.5, and this will bring us up to the fully authorized budgeted positions?
Correct. The five would. Before you, it's three. We requested to hire five, and we couldn't get support on that, so the request in front of you is three.
Okay, and so right now, we're short five firefighters?
Correct.
And if this was approved, they'd be hired right now?
No.
I mean, tomorrow or immediately, or?
No, at the personal rec committee meeting, it was asked that we delay hiring until February 1st.
And why's that?
That would be either Chairperson Welper or CFO Weidner to answer that.
We're uncertain about the '19 budget, so we're holding off to make sure that it looks like the money will be there, and if need be, he can ask for three more when the time comes.
But it's budgeted right now, isn't it?
Yes, but we would rather not lay anybody off if we can help it.
To me, isn't the issue public safety?
We understand that. If you can't pay them, what are you going to do?
But we can pay them now, because we have an authorized budget that will pay them. And we don't know for sure what's going to happen next year, do we?
No, we do not.
Well, I...
Did you wish to speak, Mr. Weidner?
May I make a comment? Michelle Weidner, Chief Financial Officer. In my tenure here, it is pretty common that we would hesitate at filling some positions as we approach this time. as we approach this time of the year. There's a lot of uncertainty yet. We don't have much information yet to work on for the fiscal 19 budget. And as Mayor Protam Welper stated, it's, you would hate to hire people, have them move their families here, change jobs and find out that we can't meet our strategic plan goals, which this group all voted on and approved. So that's why it seems prudent right now to be very cautious at adding property tax-funded positions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Jacobs.
So Chief Treeler, so I understand we're short, but let's say in the last month or two, what's been the effect on our response time or what has been our response time to fire calls?
Well, our response times have been affected and Station 6 has been closed 42 times since July 1. So we know that that area of town has been greatly affected. We have spent over 50% of our overtime budget to this point in trying to keep that station open as much as we can. So there's certainly been deficiencies throughout the city, but we try to work with what's, what we have in front of us the best we can.
So compared to, you know, in 15, we knew what the response time was, where the goal was four and the response time was three, 30 or so or 20 or, what, what number, what is our response time? Would you know the last month or two exactly what our response time would be?
No, I wouldn't have that number, I wouldn't have that number right now.
Would you say it's slower than our goal of four minutes?
I would say it's been affected negatively by the number of times Station 6 is closed. Anytime that an area or an engine company is down, then that area is underserved. Now granted, we can get in there with a different engine company, but it generally takes an increased amount of time to get in there. But I would say with some confidence that our response times overall have increased because of Station 6 being closed.
But that's a relative judgment, so would it be over four or closer to four? Are we near our goal or we're, and kind of give us a gauge of where we are? Service, customer service?
Sure, I mean, I would say right now we're probably over four minutes. I mean, I can certainly get you that detailed analysis probably in the next week or so.
That'd be great.
Sure.
Yes.
So Chief, would, would this be a time to take a look at what some of the other communities are doing, like Cedar Falls, as far as cross-training other city employees? I mean, it seems to me like you're kind of on the edge of a serious situation if you're not already there. And given the, the, some of the constraints that we've heard about, again, it would seem like that might be at least if nothing else, a short-term fix or help, maybe not a fix, but a help. I don't know, we've talked about that in the past.
What's that?
Either having a fire version of the volunteer police officers that we have. And I, I understand the education, the certification, that kind of stuff, but I also understand the, having an extra set of hands and what that might provide in a life-threatening situation. But also the, the cross-training that other communities are doing, whether or not we've taken a look at, at doing something like that.
I would comment that that's a huge undertaking and is this the right time to do that? I'm not sure. I can tell you that we are short currently and we are in a real difficult position to staff the rigs that we have. I think that needs to be a discussion that is at your level and the mayor's level and where we're going with funding for, for this fire department.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I asked the chief and I apologize, chief, I didn't ask you questions before, but the injuries, long-term injuries, are there any of them related to the labor-intensive part of the job where shoulders, muscles are being torn and causing some of the long-term injuries?
Well, of all those. Well, of all those long-term injuries that I referenced tonight, one is related to, on, on the job. So the vast majority of those are not job-related.
And then I have one additional question, I'm sorry, again, didn't ask, but in terms of the way Waterloo is set up with providing quality service to our citizenry and knowing the matrix of brain death at four minutes and fire escalating at four minutes or going out to a flashover point, which is a big deal in the fire service and can be injuries. But more importantly, what does that engine company do in a medical emergency in terms of within that four-minute response? It's, so it's beyond the fire piece of it. It's about providing emergency medical services when we've only got three ambulances running around this town and engines that are strategically located to provide that basic life support.
Correct. So every engine company, all of our personnel are trained to the EMT basic level. We have a lot of paramedics on our engine companies. So the engine company, when they arrive on scene of an EMS call, obviously provide much-needed EMS type of treatment, including an automatic defibrillator, which all of our trucks carry, along with well-trained personnel. Engine 6, for example, is an ALS engine company and we're quite proud of that. And on that engine is all the equipment that an ambulance would have, including a drug box, the 12 lead monitor, all of that. So it increases survivability and cardiac arrest greatly if we're there within three to four minutes. Now, an ambulance might be five to six minutes out and the engine, engine company can start definitive care before the ambulance arrives.
I mean, I just want to make that equation that it's not about the word fire, it's about emergency response.
Sure.
And that ability to provide that four, three to four-minute quality experience for our citizens. And it's not only just the two paramedics that arrive, somebody has to deal with the spouse and the family members and that's the real importance of making sure these engines are adequately staffed based on the council and the mayor's, what they want for response. And I think it's important that that kind of conversation occurs and whether it's in an education piece or what, to the council and others. It's labor-intensive.
We need to move right along here.
Mr. Chairman?
Jerome asked.
Mr. Chairman, I, I heard the chief say that, I'm looking here at the Resource Committee information and you're requesting for authorization for three, but I heard you say that you need five. So I guess my question would be is, is three being what you're requesting, understanding you need five, but with three being adequate for right now, and I heard the CFO say that eventually or next year after, to take a look at the budget and the different things that could impact whether those individuals keep their job from a standpoint of this three, that's going to get you some of what you need at this point in time?
Three would be significant for us. We just certified a new civil service list. We're happy about it. We think it's one of the best lists we've had in a long time. We are short paramedics right now. And to answer your question, I mean, three would be fantastic, five would be great, three would be fantastic if we could get, hire them now. I mean, we need the personnel now, not later on. And we run three shifts, so we'd initially add one per shift and, and that's sometimes the difference of keeping Station 6 open or having a fourth up ambulance manned with two paramedics or even one paramedic. So, you know, the request was five. We had a good two-hour, two-hour personal rec meeting that we came down to, we thought we could get signatures at three, we couldn't get signatures at five.
Mr. Chairman?
I, I'd like to, let me see, with, with the seven that are a long-term injury or disability, that puts us down right now to 97.5. 12?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And in, in the interest of public safety and the, and to me, this is sort of an example where rubber meets the road. I would like to make a motion to amend this request to have the appointment of three fire recruits on civil service list authorized, but also that that hiring take place immediately.
Second. We have a motion and a second to hire the three, three firefighters, but hire immediately.
Correct, yes.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of that?
I, I had a question as far as that goes.
It needs to be a roll call vote.
Is this, but is that feasible to hire them? I hear you say with recruits, you have to do some training and stuff. Now I'm hearing a motion to hire them immediately. Is that feasible?
Yeah, we would, if we had permission tonight, we anticipate making offers next week. We're doing chief's interviews right now in anticipation of possibly getting approval tonight. So in other words, we'd make offers next week.
Okay, everybody understand that now?
And I just, one follow-up question, I guess would be that if we did the three for this right away because he's got some talent, there's some paramedics in that list, my understanding, that would be immediate. And then we could reevaluate the other two or possibly three in February. Is that the way it is?
Yes, that's kind of how I understood it.
The three, I mean, we, we have anticipated retirement in, in January.
But it would be at least two.
Yes, you're postponing hiring the balance at a later date. Okay?
The balance?
Yeah, he's asking for five and we're saying we're going to authorize three with an immediate hire.
Okay.
Okay? Everybody understand that?
And we're just voting on the amend, amendment right now and then, okay?
Immediate hire.
Yeah.
Go, we need a roll call, please.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
I would vote based on the recommendation of the committee that dealt directly with this and the council of the CFO, I would vote no. And I would also suggest that if you seriously want to do something like this, I'd be open to the conversation, but then, for example, you could look at tonight's agenda and see we're hiring five or six other people. Great people, don't know anything about that whole process, but if we're going to start focusing on public safety, then I think we need to focus on public safety and we also need to focus on the budget. So I vote no.
Mr. Welper?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
Thank you.
You got it.
And Mr. Chairman, do we need to vote on the full measure then or does that take care of the vote?
Oh, sure, that's right. You're right, we need to vote on the, the measure itself. No, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, just go through it again.
Mr. Schmidt?
I'm sorry, what was the motion again?
It's to hire the three firefighters to be hired immediately.
No.
Mr. Welper?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Passes, there you go. Thank you. Now, someone would take number two, it's a request from the Fire Chief for authorization to promote three personnel to the rank of lieutenant.
Second.
No, I'm.
Oh, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the request from Fire Chief for authorization to promote three personnel to the rank of lieutenant.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on this request. We have an explanation. Pat Treeler.
Sure, so with retirements and promotions, we have three lieutenant positions open. Lieutenants are mid-level managers, there are company officers, they're the ones that are assigned to a station and are in charge of the company as well as the station, all the maintenance that's involved out there, the vehicle, all the personnel. And they're also given special assignments as an officer. We do have three open positions currently.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, we need a roll call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Okay, a motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, one question I do have is that regarding number one, what we had talked about was a three and do it immediately, and where do we sit with the other two to get us at the budgeted authorization amount number? Where do we sit with that?
Well, you're budgeted right now.
Right, they're budgeted right now, but where do we sit with getting them on board?
He's going to wait till after the first of the year to see where the city's at with its new budget.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, a second, adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We've got to jump into finance, guys. Let's call our Finance Committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I would move the approval of the agenda and minutes from November 13th, 2017 has proposed.
Second.
Motion, a second on the agenda and minutes, questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
A pose, same sign, that motion passes. Travel requests, we have two.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take those. I'm going to use the first name on this first one because I don't want to mess up the last name. Travel request for Mohammed, who is the traffic engineer to attend a class at Mobo Trex Incorporated, 2017, Davenport, Iowa, Users Group, destination is Davenport, dates December 13th through the 14th of this year, and the amount not to exceed $225. And then Rudy Jones, Community Development Director, to attend meeting, the 2018 Winter Legislative Policy and Professional Development Meeting at the National Community Development Association Conference, destination is Washington DC, dates January 22nd through the 26th, and the amount not to exceed $1,995.
Second.
Motion, a second on the travel request, questions?
Just a reaffirmation for me that that travel request to DC is reimbursed by the federal government on that?
I'm assuming so. Yeah, Rudy shaking his head, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
A pose, same sign, that motion passes. Pre-auths?
Mr. Chairman, pre-authorizations to expend over $1,000. City Clerk's office, $3,250 plus $125 shipping handling for the purchase of used storage shelving. Building maintenance, $10,989.97 for rooftop heat exchanger atop the UNEQ building. Finance, $4,000 for onsite audit preparation assistance. Fire Department, $2,123.22 plus $124.59 for shipping and handling. Frame bolts for fire truck number 306. Garage, $7,291 for a purchase of a model SKTJ 401 heavy-duty transmission jack. Garage, $2,447.56 plus $125 for tax tracks for the Bombedir. Human Resources, $13,000 for the City of Waterloo Employee Wellness Plan expense as approved by council on February 8, 2016. Leisure Services, $125 an hour for the snow and ice removal on newly constructed sidewalks and cross-rocks in the Kimball Avenue corridor. Police, $10,152 for the purchase of the annual Laserfish software update. Sanitation, $5,840.46 for two-axis cameras, PELCO licenses, hardware and installation for the recycling site at Singing Bird Lake parking lot off of Black Hawk Road in Ainsborough. Sanitation, $17,153.28 for 384 large trash cans. Suit Department, $5,757.50 plus $300 shipping and handling for the purchase of eight-inch Varick flame arrestor for Lagoon. Suit Department, $3,020 for the purchase of the Miller Suitcase Extreme 12BS Bernard Duraflex gun and 100-foot by 1/4-inch torch reel. Traffic Operations, $8,790 for 30 LED hollow-fain street light lamps. Traffic Operations, $1,565.80 plus $124.59 shipping and handling for the purchase of two and four drawer units, six-case cabin system, utility hook, et cetera. Traffic Operations, $13,486 for the purchase of four-detection camera system with hardware for Ainsborough and Home Park Boulevard. Traffic Operations, $2,200 plus $126.38 for shipping and handling for the 48-inch hand-squeeze row applicator with extension table and air cylinder kit for H.S.R.A.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on all the pre-auths, any questions on any of those items? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
A pose, same sign, that motion passes. We have three budget line item amendments which are unfiled at the City Clerk's Office, and we also have the bills payment this week. The bills payment are two million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents. That's two comma, six, seven, five, comma, three, three, six point nine nine.
Second.
Motion a second on the bills payment, questions?
Mr. Chairman, on number four, little explanation on the Hawkeye Towers overtime project.
Joe Leibl, Captain, Police Department. Hawkeye Towers overtime reimbursement, Hawkeye Towers has had some issues out there, they've hired us on an overtime basis to patrol out there, and they reimburse us for those costs.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
A pose, same sign, bills paid.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion a second on adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you. Let's call our Waterloo City Council meeting to order, today is Monday, November twentieth. I'm Councilman Welper, filling in for Mayor Hart, who is out of town and was unable to make it back for the meetings of this evening. We're running a little bit behind, we had some very important meetings this afternoon, so bear with us, we're about five, 10 minutes behind here, so with that, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here. Now, if you would, please, let's stand for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Tonight, the pledge of allegiance is read by Mr. Jacobs, word to council member.
Release Joe, I'm in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have a motion on the agenda, please?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda and also the minutes of the November thirteenth regular session as proposed.
Second. We have a motion a second on the agenda and the minutes, any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
A pose, same sign, that passes. Now it's time for oral presentations, so anything that you would like to address the council, now is the time to do that. Step to the podium and name your name and address, please, and limit your comments to three minutes.
David Dr. thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street, have a couple of, one comment and one question. On the last that I came in on, my comment on the response time, et cetera, is if we quit increasing the footprint of the city, maybe the three to four-minute response time would be happening. We keep increasing the footprint of the city, so it stretches our safety services farther and farther and farther. So maybe we should quit doing all of these, building more houses out farther away from all of our fire stations, because sooner or later, we're going to need to build another fire station, and that's not cheap. The other thing is, I read in the paper about the traffic safety cameras, that when it was originally, the bill of goods was originally sold to the council about having these safety cameras, that we were going to have some sort of signage down the street from where these permanent ones were going to be put. Indications I read in the paper was that they're not going to have an indication of a signage, any signage that's going to be down the street now from these permanent locations. So is that true or is that false?
Mr. Leibl, I believe these are handheld cameras, correct?
But it kind of indicated in the paper that even the permanent ones were not going to have the signage like was promised.
Mr. Triller, or Mr. Leibl, do you feel like you can address that?
Yeah. Joe Leibl, Captain, Police Department. There'll be signage, my understanding of it is, there'll be signage put around the city, whether it will be directly in front of the actual red light cameras, which is what you're addressing, I don't know how close it would be to them. They are going to put signage around the city saying, like you see as you go through Cedar Rapids, traffic laws photo enforced, you see it in other states as well.
Okay, but not the handhelds, and I understand that, because they're going to move all over town.
Yeah, the handhelds are portable units, they'll travel, that's why you put them at the major entrances.
Understand that, that's not the way I read it from the paper, but I could have read it wrong, thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Todd Oberdahl, one twenty-four Amity Drive. At the meeting last week, a question was posed about perhaps giving restaurant owners who have a good record on their grease traps maybe not coming around so often to check up on them with the idea that they've been doing this for years and years prior to the grease trap ordinance itself, and the response was that, well, it's better we need to keep on checking up on them, because the experience is that if we don't check up on them, then they're going to slide. I found that very interesting, especially considering the issues regarding the grease trap at the Sullivan Brothers Center for years and years, that apparently that wasn't checked on, but the city has had no problem in costing individual restaurants thousands of dollars each in repairs, fines, reporting fees, and all that. I find it interesting that the city asks us as citizens to trust the judgment of the city, and that the problem is that we ask too many questions, sometimes we should just let the city do their job without anybody looking over their shoulder. I find it interesting that the city, especially on the grease trap issue, doesn't trust the citizens, but wants the citizens to trust the city when the evidence shows that we should be looking, we should be doing otherwise. Also, in the earlier meeting, the city attorney brought up in regards to fireworks, that we can have more restrictive codes here, but we can't have more lax codes than what the state authorizes us to do, and that is true for all codes, not just fireworks, but also with the sale of real property by the city to private individuals. Thank you.
Forrest Dilavu, seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. I would like to thank the city and anyone involved in replacing the recycling bins at Amesboro on Blackhawk Road. This will be a big help. I truly hope that the citizens respect that and take proper care of it. I know I will be doing my share to pick up things that don't belong and put them where I know they can go legally, and I see that there's some cameras being proposed for their, I would hope that if there's a violation, they enforce that and fine appropriately. I did have the privilege of watching the handheld speed cameras this week, and officer in my area was out a couple houses away from me, and I walked over there and he hollered and said, "I knew you'd be here, Forrest." And he showed me how it worked and how that he forwarded it to the people that send the tickets, and he found that almost all the cars on that street, Huntington Road, were speeding, and most of them were worth sending on. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Forrest. Anyone else? Second time?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Mr. Morrissey.
I just wanted to bring up something that appeared in the Courier on yesterday, Sunday's opinion page, and it's a letter from a lady, Rosalind Deers, out of Carroll, Iowa, regarding Good Samaritan, and it speaks volumes about the people of Waterloo, especially in downtown Waterloo, how they'll come to the aid of somebody who is in trouble, and I would hope that everybody would read that in the opinion section, because it is a positive reflection on what actually downtown Waterloo is all about.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Morrissey.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, if I could ask the folks in charge of the garbage collection, there was an article in the paper, Mr. Morrissey's comment reminded me of that, where the yard waste has been extended for two weeks because of the weather, which is great, so the article in the paper, I believe, said that that was going to be extended for two more weeks, regular pickups, and I believe according to my schedule, next week, a week from this Friday, I'm scheduled for recycling, so I'm just kind of wondering how that's going to work, if somebody could clarify that, so.
Sandy?
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director. It still will be recycling week, but we're going to extend the yard waste the first weekend to December, weather permitting. So we'll have, actually, this week, there's nothing scheduled, but we're picking up yard waste. Next week, we'll be recycling, the next week will be yard waste, and if, weather permitting, we'll still be open on weekends, maybe for a week or two, because a lot of the leaves haven't fallen yet, so.
Okay, so that'll, it'll go yard waste, recycling, yard waste.
Yes.
Thank you, Sandy. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Jacobs?
So I just want to pass on, a constituent asked me about something they saw in the Waterloo Courier with some of our police officers working in Cedar Falls, and the concern was, are we being reimbursed for the cost of that, and I don't know if that's something that we could fall upon at some point, but I guess if we have public safety officers working for other communities, do we get then bill them for that, or do we get reimbursed anyway for that?
I believe I read that they were, we were being reimbursed, but we're at least sending them a bill, yes?
Joe Leibl, Captain, Police Department. We are billing them for specific situations, we had a couple guys with expertise called in to help them with their case, they were billed for those two individual officers. The emergency response, no, we have never billed for a quick, let's get this under control type situation, but the specialty individuals, yes, we do.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Captain Leibl, do we know if those bills are actually then paid by Cedar Falls? In the past, have they been?
To my experience, this is the first time we've ever done it, and I think the bill probably just went out, and maybe CFO Weidner knows more than I do about that, but the bill, I believe, just went out.
Will we be made aware whether it has been paid or not?
Yeah, we will certainly know when the money comes back, yes.
Okay, thanks.
So this goes beyond mutual aid?
Yeah, yes, there, the officers had specialty expertise that they needed that they did not have available to them.
Got you. Thank you, Chief. Captain?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion to file oral comments.
We have a motion a second on oral comments, any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
A pose, same sign, that motion passes. Consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, and that's items one, A through B eight, and within there are the bills to be paid, whoever would like to read those?
Mr. Jacobs should have that.
The bills to be paid deny total two million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars, ninety-nine cents. So that's two comma, six, seven, five, comma, three, three, six point nine nine.
Check it.
Okay, we have a motion a second on the bills payment, any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to offer a suggestion. Given the conversation we just had a little bit ago regarding our challenges with our public safety department, and given our comments by our chief financial officer, and I'd love to have her maybe speak a little bit more about this, but one of the things on our consent agenda, I believe, is the, I believe, hiring of about five or six additional positions in a variety of different places all over the city, and if, what I understood correctly at the public, or at the Human Resources Subcommittee meeting, was that if we are, to some degree or another, under the gun, to be able to provide adequate public safety, I think it would warrant taking a look at postponing the hiring of these positions for some period of time, a month, two months, while some of these other issues are resolved. So having said that, I'd love to have a conversation about that, or take those items off the consent agenda, however, whatever would be appropriate.
JB, do you feel comfortable in addressing that?
One, I guess, point I would make is that these had already cleared the Human Resources Committee, I think, with seven and O votes, and I know on our case, we've got three positions, two out of those three individuals are here right now with their families, you know, with the conditional offer of employment based on tonight, so it's a little bit different than starting the process on the fire positions. Those are my comments.
Okay.
I can speak to the individual merits of each position if you would like me to.
Well, I mean, bear in mind, this has absolutely nothing to do with those people, but I don't believe I knew until this evening, the situation of our public safety department. I don't know that I was aware we were down twelve people. I don't know about the rest of the council, maybe I missed a meeting, but I don't think I did.
We're not down twelve people, we're down five.
We're down five, and seven on long-term disability, so that means there's twelve people that are not working in the school I went to, that's twelve.
There's seven more coming, right now we're just down five. If I understood that correctly.
I believe that's incorrect.
Can you speak to that or not?
Mr. Chairman, is there a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I believe the Fire Chief should speak to it, but what I understood him to say earlier is, he's down ten today, and he'll be down a couple more, because they're having surgeries or something, but we are paying five of those ten.
Oh, five, excuse me, five are off per injuries, is that correct? Okay. They're not actually gone.
Pat Triller, Fire Chief, basically what Michelle says a hundred percent correct, we're five positions down, five on long-term injury, another two having surgery the first week of December is what I stated, so we will be twelve short if we don't get any back before the first week of December.
So today, we're down ten?
That's correct.
Thank you. So, I don't know if there's any other interest in my suggestion or not, and if there's not, then that's the end of that conversation.
Any other comments from anyone? Hearing none?
Mr. Councilman, could you restate your suggestion?
Well, my suggestion was to take, I don't know if we want to take a look at these individually, but it sounds to me like we are in a little bit of a budget constraint, and I don't know that that's an adequate term, and again, I don't know if we should take these six items off here and make them a separate item, and then Ms. Weidner could speak to that, and in the meantime, we can approve the consent agenda, or I'm not a Roberts Rules of Order expert, so I'm not sure how to proceed with this, but...
Mr. Councilman, are you talking about the fire itself, or are you talking about other positions?
I'm talking about the six positions are on the consent agenda to approve.
Okay.
If we are in some level of dire straits with our public safety issue, would there be an opportunity here to delay these folks coming to work and be able to use those funds to help supplant the fire department, is my question.
Got it.
I'm not even sure how you answer that. Any suggestions?
Mr. Chairman, is that a motion or what? I don't know, I haven't heard a motion yet.
He hasn't made a motion.
I haven't made a motion.
He's making a suggestion that we look at something like...
I was looking to see if there was any interest in that, Councilman Morrissey, it's what we call a conversation.
Right. Our question, Mr. Chairman, are any of these, or are all of these paid out of the general fund, or do we get some from road use, other sewer funds, any of those other funds that don't impact, as Mr. Schmidt was talking about, Councilman Schmidt?
Parthy from the general fund, please.
Michelle Weidner, Chief Financial Officer. First of all, I want to reiterate what JB said. This group already approved filling these positions unanimously. We have gone through the process, Human Resources has put a lot of effort into advertising, interviewing, they've gone through the civil service process, they've created job descriptions, we've made offers to people, it's a bit late for changing our minds on those positions, in my opinion. So, the appointments that are on here... So the appointments that are on here, some are funded using sewer fees, some are funded using culture and arts fees, um, some are funded by the parks, but they are partially funded using road use tax funds. So some are, there is some portion that is funded by property taxes. Um, but, and I'd also like to reiterate, I don't recall anyone saying we're in any dire consequences for the budget yet. I believe what I said is, we don't have adequate information at this time to know. And I also said, we often, typically, would wait until we have adequate information to begin the process on new hires. I'm guessing these processes, these positions were probably approved by the Human Resources Committee three to four months ago. It takes that long to get through the process, and that, it's just how it works. Otherwise, they'd have all been on the payroll by now. It's a little bit different situation than what we were discussing earlier with the fire department.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
I have a comment and a question. I wonder if we could look at this process, it seems kind of the cart before the horse type thing, where maybe we could have, in the future, we could look at approving these before we'd make a job offer, we have families sitting here, and, and then no one wants to vote no because the families are sitting here, and so it's just a really kind of an awkward process. I think that could really be improved. Then secondly, more specifically, um, on position number three, is that a new position, or is that an existing position? If it was new, did we approve that, or was that, um, approved by the commission and the council, or, how, what, can we get a little more information on number three?
Steve?
Steve Holmbricker, Waste Management Services Director. The position that Councilman Jacobs has requested is called CMOM Coordinator, and that position has been altered, I won't say altered, previously, what we're doing is taking what was called the CMOM Specialist Position and calling that now the CMOM Coordinator Position. It does a couple things. It puts everybody working in the same class down at Waste Management versus having one employee who's in a different class, and makes things, in my opinion, and when I presented this to the Personnel Rec Committee, uh, made more sense to do this under that proposal. So it is taking the old CMOM Specialist Position and making it a CMOM Coordinator Position.
So, Mr. Holmbricker, that would be a new position?
In those terms, yes.
So was that approved by council?
I believe it was for the fact that you, basically, when we brought the process forward, like JB indicated earlier, we brought it forth through the council to approve to fill that position. It was approved by this council, then we went through the whole civil service hierarchy to get to where we are today, and now we're here to recommend approval of the person taken from the list.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I would just like to say for the third time, this has nothing to do with the individuals on the agenda. I was not talking about not hiring them. What I was questioning is whether or not it would be prudent to delay their starting time because we were recommended by the CFO and the committee to bring three firefighters on in February, I believe. Well, the council didn't follow that guideline and decided to hire them immediately without having real good idea how they're going to be paid for. Uh, so that was the only reason I made that suggestion, and if that's not a worthwhile suggestion, if the funds come from different departments, it just caught my eye, and I thought it warranted a conversation.
No, I appreciate that, Mr. Schmidt, but I think Mrs. Weidner stated that we've already approved it some months ago, and we're just filling them now.
Right.
So, you're right, it's almost too late.
Yep.
Okay. Any, anyone else?
Call a question?
Uh, this is a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number two.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, would you like to recognize some of the folks who are in the audience tonight that are, are new employees now? I think that'd be appropriate.
New promotions.
New employees. I'm sorry. Uh, who am I speaking about?
Well, I know there's Sherry Kabas here.
Morris.
Stand up, stand up.
Stand up.
Yes.
Okay, and the gentleman in the back?
Ken Pauls.
Okay, thank you to both of all.
1,000.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, that's all right. All right. Item number two is a motion received and filed proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's a request by Standard Distribution Company, Inc., for a site plan amendment to the M2P Planned Industrial District to allow for the construction of a 50,000-square-foot industrial building with a 26, 26-acre lay-down yard located north of 3040 Levercy Road.
Second. Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. I'll now declare the hearing open. Are there any comments on file? Madam Clerk?
No, sorry.
Okay. No comments on file?
Can I speak, sir?
Yes, you may.
Uh, David Dr. 3145 West Fourth Street. What does this cost us as a citizen, and does Tiff pay for part of this? Is this in the Tiff district? Where do the funds come from that we might have to come up with?
Noel.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. Just to be clear, this is a zoning action, um, so there's actually no Tiff funds involved in the zoning action. However, for the development of the site, the City of Waterloo will be utilizing Tiff funds for the extension of services to this area. The City of Waterloo has a total of about 310 acres along Levercy Road, so this will be one of the first projects in that area that will be extending water, sewer, infrastructure to that area.
And an estimated cost, sir, of?
We're, uh, we're working on some of the costs. The Water Works has already let a contract for, uh, water extension along Levercy Road, so Matt can share those costs if he'd like, and then we're working on the location of the sewer extension at this time.
Guess I don't get a figure. Thank you.
Anyone else wishes to speak to the issue? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion to file the oral comments and also the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the closing of the hearing. Any questions? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, that motion passes.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion received, filed, considered, and passed for the first time, and ordinance amending, ordinance number 5079 is amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance. By amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10 dash 4 dash 4, approving a site plan amendment on certain property located north of 3040 Levercy Road.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this. Questions? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, that motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I make, that's a roll call, yeah.
Okay, we'll do a roll call on that.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Okay, passes.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion to spend the rules.
Second. Motion and second on spending the rules.
Question about timing.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. They were talking about potentially starting this fall, um, so they would appreciate moving this ahead. Um, we did not receive any objections, um, to the M2P Planned Industrial District Site Plan Amendment from anyone in this area.
So given the fact we're on the edge of winter, they'll still be proceeding, you think?
That is what they're working on right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Motion to spend the rules.
I seconded. Oh, you did? Okay, I didn't catch that. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Same sign. Roll call two. Oh, I should have marked them then, shouldn't we?
Roll call.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second. Motion and second on that. Would you like a roll call on that? Okay.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Okay, very good, that passes. Thank you. Item number three.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Morrissey.
Like to make a motion received and file proof publication notice of public hearing on the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located north of 3040 Levercy Road in the amount of $1 to SDC Real Estate LLC, including a development agreement.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the sale and conveyance. Questions? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, that motion passes. I'll declare this hearing open. Are there any comments on file? Madam Clerk?
No.
Okay. Anyone in the audience that wishes to speak for or against the matter? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion to close the hearing?
Second. We have a motion and a second on closing the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, that motion passes.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of city-owned property generally located north of 3040 Levercy Road in the amount of $1 to SDC Real Estate LLC, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this resolution, which is a roll call. If you would, please.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement with SDC Real Estate LLC, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said agreement.
Second. Motion and second on this resolution. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Okay. Item number four.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Amos?
Like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located near Chalmers Drive in the northeast corner of Ainsborough Avenue and Upton Avenue, in the amount of $15,001 to Village Creek Rentals LLC, including a development agreement.
Second. We have a motion and second, second on this sale and conveyance. Any questions? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Now, I'll declare the hearing open. Are there any comments on file, Madam Clerk?
No.
Okay, no comments on file. Anyone in the audience that wishes to speak for or against the matter?
Forest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. I believe some of these properties are being sold through the 657A sale process, which means that they will pay $5,000 to guarantee they do the job, and the city will give them another $5,000 when they're done. So rather than, uh, the citizens thinking, we're going to get $15,000, it's going to cost us $15,000, plus we will lose the $15,000 we would normally get before we change that 657A process. So it's going to cost us $30,000. You talk about tight budgets, and now we're, we're changing the 657A process, I believe, because we have not done this with vacant lots. We have done this with houses on them to make sure they did the house, that's why we required the $5,000, and that's why we gave the $5,000. But now we're doing it on vacant lots, so I think we're creating a whole new policy here, and I've never heard the policy be changed. If I'm incorrect, please let me know. Thank you.
Noel, do you feel you can address that?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. When we changed the 657A, uh, sale of property policy, it was actually for houses and for lots. As you are well aware, the City of Waterloo spends a large amount of money, I believe over $120,000 a year, on, uh, snow removal and mowing of lots, so we believe that this is a very positive step. Um, both of these houses will be worth over $140,000, so we'll get some infill housing, which will bring potential new residents, new construction, new, uh, revenue in the permit process, as well as future taxes being paid into the well-known future.
But isn't this the first time we have done vacant lots? We have done lots with houses on them and gave them the $5,000.
I believe this is the first time we've done it with vacant lots.
Thank you, sir.
Under the previously approved policy.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second. Motion and second on closing the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, that motion passes.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a resolution authorizing sale and conveyance of city-owned property generally located along Chalmers Drive in the northeast corner of Ainsborough Avenue and Upton Avenue, in the amount of $15,001 to Village Creek Rentals LLC, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Yeah, motion and second on this resolution. Questions?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Morrissey?
Noel, could you address the issues about if there's a, is this the same property or properties or the area where we're talking about commercial development, uh, for that area on Ainsborough, and then the twin homes on, on Upton? And if so, uh, the, uh, egress, um, or, uh, exit and entrance where they will be coming, hopefully, they will not be on Ainsborough Avenue?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. One of the purposes of acquiring the Ainsborough and Upton parcel was there were some concerns about the alley, alley access in terms of the location of it and where the actual property line was, um, and private property owners blocking that. Um, with this redevelopment, we have excluded the sale of the east 16 feet of the Ainsborough-Upton parcel, so we will keep that for the location of the alley to remain us to have access to the sewer line that's in that area, as well as to allow the neighbors to have access to the rear portion of their properties.
And Noel, would, what about if there's a commercial property, though? That's my question. And that property is faced, or storefront or face front on Ainsborough Avenue, is there going to be entrance and exit on Ainsborough?
In the development agreement, the city council and obviously staff have an approval process for how that lays out. We would anticipate that the, uh, entrance to the, uh, commercial portion of this would be off of Upton, most likely across the street from the alley to the south side of Upton, which would make perfect sense.
Okay, thank you.
We would anticipate that the entrance to the commercial portion of this would be off of Upton, most likely across the street from the alley to the south side of Upton, which would make perfect sense.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement with Village Creek Rentals LLC and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said agreement.
Second. Motion and a second on this resolution. Questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
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 Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
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 Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. Motion and a second on this resolution. Need a roll call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
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 Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
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 Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. Motion and a second on this resolution. Need a roll call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
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 Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?